For those that are able, please join and rise me even pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Start our meeting today with the Citizens Forum. If we have any citizens that would like to come before the commission with any comments or concerns on items that are not a part of today's agenda, please come forward and state your name and your issue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Tracy Sin and I live on 340 and 1/2 South Connecticut, Salina, Kansas. And I would like to say that Access TV provide a valuable service to the community, especially the cable casting for public meetings on Channel 21. It is important for all of us to support the Access TV staff as they work to provide programming. I greatly appreciate the guidance the staff has given me in producing numerous shows due in past years. Thank you so much and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other citizens? Sir?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ray Hariska, 235 North Santa Fe. I wanted to talk, make a few comments about the Health Department. And the delay that has been going on for the last, I don't know, six or seven or eight months only exacerbates the Health Department becoming operational. According to state statute regarding health and welfare of the public is the primary concern. When the city does not cooperate, it causes the people to question who's running the city. Is it Jason Gage? Is it Clark Beisen Linville? Or the City Commissioners? Are the City Commissioners leading? The City Manager? Or is it the other way around? When the memorandum of understanding was brought to the attention of the city sometime back, the City Commissioner should have motioned and voted to abide to the agreement. My question is what kind of information was fed to the City Commissioners by the City Manager in all the executive sessions? My comment is stop this nonsense and do the people's bidding to restore confidence in our government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizen comment? Seeing none today, we do not have any awards and proclamations or public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so that moves us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 14, 2012. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of December 17, 2012. Item 6.3, approve the minutes of December 19, 2012. Item 6.4, approve the minutes of December 27, 2012. Item 6.5, authorize the maintenance and water well number 12, project number 132956, to Lane Christensen Company in the amount not to exceed $68,626.78. Item 6.6, resolution number 136965, authorizing the City Manager to renew the agreement with Delta Dental of Kansas Incorporated for dental care benefits. Item 6.7, award of contract for the wastewater pump station rehabilitation at pump station numbers 11 and 42, project number 122938, to Stevens Contractors Incorporated in an amount of $138,575. Item 6.8, resolution number 136967, authorizing the Mayor to sign an agreement with OCCK Incorporated, providing for the funding and public transportation services within the city of Salina.
Are there any items that a Commissioner would like pulled or has any questions on? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carried 5-0. We now move into development business.
Item 7.1, application number P04-3B for the acceptance of offered utility and drainage easement dedications to serve Quail Meadows Estates addition number two.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Items 7.1 and 7.2 on your agenda are companion items. They will kind of merge together at points, but they are two separate action items that need to be considered separately. But the first item is a proposed replat. And that subject of that is a Lot 1, Block 8 in Quail Meadows Estates addition, which is outlined there in red. And the original Quail Meadows Estates addition was approved in early 2005. It consisted of 124 single-family lots, 11 townhome duplex lots, and two C1-zone lots along Schilling Road. Lot 1, Block 8 is one of the C1-zone lots. And there has been gradual development. John, if you go back to the aerial photo, you can see how the development has phased in, starting really to the west and working its way east. It's been four development phases so far. There's a fifth development phase that's on the boards up here that Mr. Byquist is ready to initiate. And this would be the sixth phase. But as you can see from the aerial photo, there has been no development at all in Block 8. And so this application that we have before you today as far as a replat would be to take this area outlined in red and to carve that up into seven residential building lots for new home construction. And there's a companion item to this, which is to rezone that area to single-family residential. Mr. Byquist believes that there is a market-driven need for additional single-family lots in his residential development and points to the fact that it's been seven years since this lot was platted and there's been no interest in developing it in the original format, which was to accommodate perhaps a church or offices or apartment buildings. At this time, the only thing that would change is this arrangement here. At the same December 18, Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission considered a plan for this piece right here that involved construction of four, fourplex apartment units, or a total of 16 apartments. As you can see here, the lots would be 78 feet wide, 132 feet deep, which is comparable to the rest of the subdivision. They have access to a public street, Eileen Lane, which is already constructed. All of the lots have frontage and access to utilities, except for electricity at the present time. This property did get assessments for street, stormwater, water and sewer when Eileen Lane was constructed as part of Phase 4. Except we pointed out to the developer that because it was not anticipated that these would be separate lots, there is no taps in place for water and sewer at this time, and that would be the responsibility of the developer. Electricity would come in, coming from Schilling Road up here, and be laid in the back. The primary discussion on this item at the Planning Commission meeting, as you can see from the minutes, was what the rear yard drainage system was going to consist of here. And what the Planning Commission resolved in that matter was that the developer and his design engineer would either need to come up with a enforceable lot grading plan that would ensure that these lots drain from back to front to Eileen Lane. And if that is not accomplished, then they would have to put in the concrete ribbon in the rear yard, which is present in all the other blocks in this subdivision. So the Planning Commission reviewed this replat at their December 18 meeting and voted to approve the request, subject to the three conditions you see outlined on page 6. And one of those relates to the fact that these are only half easements here. They're only 10 feet wide. So Mr. Byquist will have to dedicate the other half separately outside the replat, that there either be a concrete drainage ribbon here to take water down to Melanie Lane, or an alternate grading plan approved by the city engineer. And then there are a number of impact fees or cost recovery fees associated with this subdivision that will be collected before building permits are issued. So if you can concur with the action the Planning Commission took, then a motion should be made to authorize the Mayor to sign this replat. And what you would be accepting is the dedication of these new easements right here for utilities and drainage. With that, I'd be open to any questions. Mr. Byquist is here if you have questions of him.
Any questions of staff? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission for any discussion and action.
Mayor, I move we authorize the Mayor to sign the plat and accept the offered easement dedications on behalf of the city.
Second.
Put a motion and a second to allow for the Mayor to authorize the proposed application P04-3B filed by Quail Meadows Estates and accept the offered utility easements and drainage easements. And I'm assuming within the three operating conditions that were passed forward from the Planning Commission. Correct?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, application number Z12-23, requesting a change in zoning district classification from PC1 to R1 for property located on the south side of Eileen Lane between Kaywood Drive and Melanie Lane. Sub item 7.2A, first reading ordinance number 1310670.
Mr. Andrew.
This is part two of the same property. This is a request to change the zoning district classification on the 56-foot by 132-foot area that we just discussed. As you can see on the map, this is Ohio Street over here. This is Schilling Road. We have some commercial lots here, and then there's approximately 58 acres coming back this direction. In that 58 acres, there's 124 single-family lots and 11 lots over here for townhomes. This was zoned, planned, restricted business as one large lot. And as just mentioned, Mr. Byquist believes that it is better suited to residential matching the lots on the north side of Eileen Lane. And so, again, the City Commission approved this zoning pattern and this plat back in March of 2005. And Block 8 has remained undeveloped since that time. The request is for single-family zoning for seven housing units. They would be directly across the street from R1 zoning and similarly sized lots. And there's adequate fire protection, water supply, and sanitary sewer lines in place. As we noted, the only thing lacking would be electricity. The density here would be four units an acre, which is, fits the low-density residential category and is consistent with the remainder of the subdivision. The comprehensive plan shows this as future suburban residential, and that four units per acre fits within that category. And Mr. Byquist may want to speak to that. I think you see from the Planning Commission minutes, he is talking about coming back at a later time and coming in with a similar pattern. Perhaps a streak coming on, basically, even with where you see Jack Circle, having a cul-de-sac here and converting that to additional single-family lots. So if you visualize this, if this were approved for seven single-family lots, then a potential cul-de-sac here with single-family lots around it, and then this piece here has been optioned by Roger Simpson for construction of four, fourplex apartment units. And that plan was also approved by the Planning Commission on the 18th. So the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this rezoning. That was a continuation from a November hearing. There was one comment favorable from a neighbor at the November meeting. No comments received at the December meeting. Planning Commission recommended that the rezoning request be approved, and they thought this was a logical extension of the development pattern in Quail Meadows Estates and that the R1 zoning would be compatible with the zoning and uses across the street. So if you concur with that, the attached ordinance, which is 1310670, should be approved on first reading. With that, I'd be open to any questions. And again, Mr. Byquist is here if you have questions about his plans for the property.
Any questions of staff?
Not, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission for further discussion and action.
I move we approve item number 13-10670 on first reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 13-10670 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, consider 14 individual applications requesting amendment of the official zoning map of the city of Salina for the purpose of mapping the newly established public use educational facilities zoning classification.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This comes to you as 14 individual applications for 14 individual properties initiated by the Planning Commission. And for that reason, if you're ready, John, we would show you a graphic depiction of each of those 14 in the order in which they appear in your packet. And the first request relates to the rezoning of South High School at 730 East Magnolia Road. It's currently zoned, single-family residential. And the request initiated by the Planning Commission would be to change that classification to public use educational facilities. The second request relates to Central High School. And that is also, their campus is currently zoned, R1, single-family residential. And their campus is bordered by Crawford, Roach, McAdams, and Front Street. And the request or proposal is to rezone that campus from its present R1, single-family to public use educational facilities. The third individual application relates to South Middle School. South Middle School is addressed at 2040 South 4th Street. It is currently zoned, R1, single-family residential. And the request is to reclassify it to public use educational facilities. Item four is Lakewood Middle School. That is application Z1211. That property is currently zoned, R3, multifamily residential. And that is primarily because when the school was constructed in 2000, there wasn't a public use zoning district. So R3 was used in its place because it was the most intense residential district. The request is to take that campus and to rezone it to public use educational facilities as well. The first elementary school is Coronado Elementary School. That is located on Neal and Ray. And that property is also zoned, single-family residential, and is in a predominantly residential setting. The request or proposal is to reclassify that to public use educational facilities. The sixth school site is also an elementary school. That is Cottonwood School, formerly known as Whittier School. And that block is bounded by Walnut, Phillips, Spruce. And can't see the label on the east side, because that would be Baker Street. And so that was originally the site of Whittier School. Whittier School was torn down and replaced with Cottonwood School. One thing you'll notice in the ordinance is that the legal description of the property is Lot 1, Block 1, Whittier School Edition, but that was done before the school district decided to change the name to Cottonwood. So the property is actually in the Whittier School Edition. Husner Elementary is located at 1300 Norton Street. That is also zoned, single-family residential, and bounded by Minneapolis, Quincy, Jewel, and Norton. And the proposal is to take that and reclassify it from single-family residential to public use educational facilities. Item eight is Metal Arc Ridge Elementary School. And just for your benefit, I don't know how easy it would be to get to the aerial photo, John, but that might show this one a little better. This is Metal Arc Elementary School. The original school site is on the south side of Glen Avenue. The school district acquired this property and replatted it as part of the 1999 bond issue and many of the 2000 construction projects. The zoning ordinance for the city used to not require off-street parking for schools and churches. So we had a number of elementary schools that had no off-street parking for staff or visitors. And so this property was acquired and incorporated into the school site. And there's a parking lot here on the north side of Glen. So when we speak to Metal Arc School campus, we're speaking to both north and south side of Glen. The ninth item or application is for Oakdale Elementary School. And that has a blend of R1 and R2 zoning because the original school site is here. And the school district purchased property over here to the east of Columbia. Columbia was vacated and the site grew so that they could have additional area for an addition to the east as well as a playground. Schilling Elementary School is located out on Canterbury Drive, just south of Schilling Road. And it is currently zoned, single-family residential. It is the only school site in Salina that, for some reason at the time that this was platted as the Fox Run Edition, the school was accepted from the plat because it was still owned by the federal government and did not get transferred to USD 305 until 1970. As to the 11th application, that would be Stewart Elementary School. That's located at Wayne and Roach and also bounded by Belmont Boulevard. That is zoned, single-family residential, and is also proposed to be reclassified to public use. The 12th location is Sunset Elementary School. That's over on West Republic. The campus looks like this. It's also zoned, single-family residential, and is proposed to be reclassified to public use educational facilities. The 13th location is the former Kennedy Elementary School. It's now the Hartland Early Education Center, and it's located out on Jupiter Avenue next to Hegeman. It's also zoned, single-family residential, and proposal is to rezone it to public use. And the last application relates to the USD number 305 Administrative Offices, which is the former Glenifer Hill Elementary School site. You may recall that the school site included this entire parcel. This piece there in white was deeded over to the city of Salina and is under our ownership for a small neighborhood park. So the only part that is part of this application is the area outlined in blue. John, if you could go to the slide that has the zoning status of the schools pre and post 1977? I think we told the Planning Commission, and it certainly applies here as well, that this is the most important slide, if we could blow that up, John. What you see on the left-hand side is the list of school sites where a change in the current status from R1, single-family residential to public use would mean no change in the zoning status of the school. And the reason for that is that all the schools that were built before 1977 were done so as permitted uses. They're still permitted uses today. There were additions and modifications that were made in 2000 following the approval of the school bond issue. And so therefore, all those occurred with no public hearing, no notice, no input from neighbors or review by the Planning Commission. And so this change to public use would not change the status of those schools. In the case of Lakewood Middle School, Cottonwood Elementary, the Metal Arc North Campus, Oakdale, and the USD 305 Administrative Offices, if this change were approved by you today, those five would be classified the same as the other nine and would be permitted uses in the district in which they're located. So if you focus on for which locations would this actually be a change to the current status or current method of review, these are the ones that the Planning Commission focused on. As you can see from the minutes, I think they had their greatest discussion about Metal Arc School, just because it's bisected by a street, and that was a little, been unusual. You have quite a bit of background information in your report. I'm sure you're familiar with the various phases at which this has come before you and been discussed. But there was an initial Planning Commission public hearing on the 2nd of October. You have the minutes from that meeting. The Planning Commission took no action at that meeting, but set the hearing aside to allow the corrective text amendment process to run its course. That was completed at the end of November in your first meeting of December. And then on December 4, the hearing was reopened, and the Planning Commission reviewed each one of these sites in detail. And at the conclusion of each of their reviews, they made the same conclusion and the same findings for each of the 14 school sites. And their finding was that each school site is an established public use in the neighborhood in which it's located, and that it is compatible with surrounding uses. They found that the proposed public use designation for the schools, more accurately, reflects the ownership and use of the school property than the single-family residential designation. And they also took note of the fact that the future land use map in the comprehensive plan shows each of these school sites as a public or semi-public land use and not as a residential land use, and therefore the change would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. You have the authority as a governing body to consider and act on each of the school location individually and on its own merits. So you could decide that one or more of these properties should not be placed in the new public use district, or you could find that the public interest would not be served by including a particular school in the rezoning category. So your options, if we refer to page eight of your report, is you've got a recommendation for each of the 14 school sites. They have been merged into a single zoning ordinance, but each of the tracks is identified separately within the ordinance. So if you concur with the Planning Commission, you would simply approve the attached ordinance on first reading, ordinance 1310671. If you determine that one or more of these sites should not be included or have their zoning changed, then the appropriate thing to do would be to have an individual commissioner amend the ordinance or make a motion to amend to delete a school or schools from the list. or schools from the list. So your other option, of course, would be to disagree with the recommendation, and to simply deny all these zoning changes altogether. That would take four affirmative votes at this meeting. I'd be happy to address any questions you have about the information in your packet. If you have any legal or procedural questions, I'd defer those to Mr. Bankston, or if there's any additional graphics that you would like to see up on the screen related to a question, we'd be happy to put those up for you. But if not, I'll stand for any questions.
Dean, just, I guess, just some questions on the schools. Why is Hegeman not on there? And this is just more, I guess, for my own information. And then the new maintenance building, and then their building that's downtown. Are those zoned differently for a reason? I'm just curious why they weren't included on here. I have no knowledge or any...
The reason that they were not included, the Hegeman School site, was a conglomeration of about four different zoning districts, and was done as a planned development district.
Okay.
And there were a number of stipulations and things that still had to be addressed by the school district to fulfill that planned development district. The planning commission did approve a final site plan for construction of an alternative school at the corner of Hegeman and Cloud Street.
Okay.
And what the school district and city staff anticipates is when that is all built out, and all the items related to the planned development district are fulfilled, that that will be added to the list to come back for public use zoning designation.
And then what about their building downtown? Or like, what is that, Fifth Street, or...?
I don't believe that there was any interest, because it wasn't really an educational facility.
Okay.
One, and two, I think they anticipate selling it.
Oh, okay.
When the other facility is complete.
Okay, okay.
The only other one was discussed was over there at Mulberry, where they have the current alternative school and other things, but they didn't wish to pursue that at this time.
Okay, yeah, the old, kind of area by Oakdale's entrance and everything. Okay, okay.
These lists of 14 is based on interest expressed by the school board.
Sure.
So Salina Christian Academy and Sacred Heart, they don't have anything to do with this?
They would have the option of doing this also, but this, they, it could include both public and private schools, but we'd see how this went.
First.
Then we'd approach them about whether they want to pursue that. That would be Sacred Heart, that would be Salina Christian Academy. It would just be optional for them. The school district wanted, and the school board wanted this to happen, so we started with them first.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you.
Before we move forward on this item, at this point in time, I would request that we move into executive session for the entirety of five minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters of attorney-client privilege.
Second.
A motion and a second to move into the executive session for attorney-client privilege. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are in executive session for five minutes and shall return at 4:30, or four, yeah, 4:37 and a half. Okay, we've returned from our executive session back into general session. Do we have any further questions of Mr. Andrew at this point in time?
No, not here.
Seeing none, I'd open it up for any public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment? Yeah?
My name is Sandra Hernandez. I live at 1940 Starlight Drive. I'd like to address the commissioners this evening, and you, Mr. Mayor, first of all, to find out if you did receive, if each of you did receive a copy of the email that I sent on January 3rd. Then, I didn't quite understand why it wasn't included in the packet. However, I wanted to be able to address you and let you know that it's more than a complaint that I was bringing up in my email. It was more of what I, as a citizen, am recommending that the commissioners do. I know that you trust the staff, and that you accept their recommendations, and you have choices on what you can do with those recommendations. And so I am here tonight to say that I would recommend that the commissioners do not accept on the first reading this ordinance, and put it through to the second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further public comment? Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission for further discussion and any action.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 13-10671 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 13-10671 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries five zero. Now we move into administration business.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 136966, commending the comprehensive fee schedule of the city of Salina, providing for water and wastewater rates.
Mr. Franz.
Mayor and commissioners, thank you. As you all probably realize, we normally do our rate changes in summer at budget time. This year, we deferred those until later in the year, until we'd see what performance in the fund was like for the year, and make those appropriate adjustments. The rates as projected, or as recommended, provide adequate operating funds for the utility. They provide for immediate capital needs, as well as some long-term capital needs over the next five years or so, and will ensure a sound operating basis. The changes recommended vary from 3% to 4%, depending on the particular revenue item. They average about 3.6, I believe, for a typical user. That being said, I guess I'd stand for questions.
Yeah, and I think you alluded to it, but my question overall would be that this is for future capital need increase versus an actual increase in our overall operating expenses.
There, we do anticipate some year-to-year increase in operating expenses, probably in order of a couple of percentages. But we do have some large projects pending. We have a continuing project replacement of our distribution lines to provide for water quality and flow needs. We have, in approximately four years, I believe, what amounts to a total replacement of our wastewater plant system, which would be a very large project. And we have the matter of dealing with the environmental contamination at the Schilling site, which is a fairly large unknown for us at this point. So there are, I would say that the bulk of this is driven by those long-term considerations rather than immediate operating cost change.
At this point in time, it's really kind of unknown about the meter replacements, how much that's going to bring forward. That'd be projective at best.
It appears that that is generating some additional revenues. I am not prepared to, you know, flag a number for you at this point, but it appears to me as though that is having the intended effects of producing a more uniform billing and some overall additional revenues.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, the staff? Thank you. Do we have any citizen comment on this item? Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission for further discussion and action.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 13-6963, a resolution establishing water and wastewater rates in a comprehensive fee schedule of the city of Salina.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 13-6963. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carried five zero.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 136966, adopting the 2013 through 2017 capital improvement program.
Mr. Franz.
I was moving before you asked. This is the, as we said, 2013, 2017 capital improvement program budget. It includes a major of projects that we have anticipated to be scheduled over the next five years, mostly funded through either bond issues or accumulations of cash in various reserve funds. It does also include the, what we call our sub-CIP program for the 2013 year. There is one change, correction, addition, whatever you want to call it, to that, and that is that I did notice that the packet inadvertently left out the system enhancements list for the utilities, and I distributed those to you earlier today. And the amount there that is scheduled is now 3.135 million dollars, as opposed to the 1.7. That incorporates some carryover projects that were originally budgeted for 2012, but that were not completed in that time. In terms of the impact on our financial condition, the bond and interest mill levy is projected to remain at 5.95 mills throughout the period. Sales tax fund also provides a significant source of funding. Sales tax fund is committed pretty much entirely for the next three years, and then there begins to appear some additional availability after that time. It, of course, expires in 2019, I believe. And so at that point, we will no longer be able to use that source of funding. We did go through the projects in some detail at study session, so I don't think I'll read through the list again, but I would be glad to address any questions you might have.
Any questions, the staff, this time?
You said no funding after 2019 on the sales tax.
The special sales tax is set to sunset in 2019, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll find something to spend it on.
Well, and of course, as we approach that time, that will be a discussion item, I'm sure.
Any further questions, the staff? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item today? Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission for further discussion and any action.
Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution 13-6966.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 13-6966. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carried five zeros.
Item 8.3, Resolution Number 136964, authorizing the city manager to renew the agreement to provide administrative services for the self-funded health benefit plan and individual aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas.
Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. The city of Salina Health Insurance Program has self-funded our program since 97, and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas has been our administrative services and stop-loss provider since that time. Annually, the agreements are renewed prior to our plan year that begins on February 1st. Self-funded programs involve the employer contributing funds to cover the expenses into a fund, rather than pay all of the premiums directly to the provider. And then, as well, for the administrative duties, we do pay fees. That helps Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas take care of the claims processing, data entry marketing, some of those other expenses that they have. They also provide us with stop-loss coverage that's similar to like a large deductible or maximum deductible for our program. So in the event we have individuals that have losses above, or claims above $150,000, that coverage kicks in. Or in the event that entire group would be 20% above where we projected our claims for the year, we would have some insurance, so our fund has some security there. Summary of the proposal was outlined for you in the packet. Over the last couple of years, we have anticipated that we would need to change the structure of our program, but we have had a few good years, and we haven't changed our deductible structure because doing so would cause us to lose our grandfather status with the healthcare reform provisions, and would cause us to incur other expenses. So we've been very satisfied on where we've been, and we've chosen just to stay where we're at with the planned structure. Fiscally speaking, funds for the health insurance-related expenses are taken care of and budgeted in our employee benefit fund. We fund this by not only putting in city funds, but also the employee funds, as well as those subgroups that are part of our plan. During 2012, we did factor in a 10% decrease, and that was because our plan had done very, very well. And rather than try to figure out a rebate system, we thought the best thing to do was to leave the fund at a surplus going into the benefit year, rolling back the funding, knowing that we were above our target fund. And that way, we planned on the fund coming back down to target, but also giving the subgroups, as well as the employees, a break on the expenses. And so far, it has worked out fairly well. We do project that, and I was looking at numbers even since this report was given to you, but we will anticipate that we are going to be somewhere between $100,000 to $300,000 to the negative for the entire year, but it will be in line of where we projected, given the numbers in front of you. For the 2013 budget, we did increase our premium 7%, so we hope that will be sufficient to take care of our claims over the course of the year. In the renewal, Blue Cross Blue Shield Kansas projected our claims to be just a slight decrease, or for the most part, flat. So we think we're okay there. In terms of where we were at with the renewal, the one area that we did have concerns about was the stop loss. And upon our initial proposal from Blue Cross, we were looking at about it, an 18% increase. Because we've had such solid years, and because we had some major concerns there, we talked with them. They agreed to take a look at it. They did review it, and they came back with a lower stop-loss proposal, and that is the one that you have. Overall, it'll be about a 9% increase for fees, which would be a $30,000 impact for 2013, a $30,000 increase over what we were paying in 2012. Stop loss, the rate is formula-driven. We asked specifically for the formula that we used, and that was not supplied to us. The structure of it, 15% of that stop-loss rate is what happens with our plan, and the other 85 is determined by what happens with the pools. The other, the pool or the other plans that are very similar in Kansas. So in theory, for those years that if we have not a good year and have higher-than-usual claims, as long as all of those other groups in that pool do not also have higher-than-usual claims, it should work in our favor and provide some stability in what that stop-loss increase, if any, comes back to us. But I guess we wanted to make sure that you had the information and the percentages in front of you about the stop loss, and those were our concerns. Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas, they are a very good claims administrator, and one of the things that they do have, that some of our other options may have, are the provider discounts. Those that are contracted with their network do allow very large discounts, which helps us offset expenses overall. The stop-loss increases may prompt a review of alternative providers for future plan years, but the recommendation for this year would be to renew where we're at going into February 1st and for the benefit year. There are some representatives from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas here to answer any questions, as well as Bob Charlesworth, our insurance consultant. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have with me.
Do we standardly seek quotations every year in advance? I know that that's a lengthy and difficult process, and still, those numbers aren't firm when they come back from an insurance carrier. But do we, as policy, do that every year?
We do not do that annually. We do not do that annually. It probably has been a few years since that was looked at. A lot of it has to do with where our renewal's at and how comfortable we are with the rates, and then we also rely on Mr. Charlesworth to give us an idea of what's going on in the market and, you know, to kind of provide direction on what we should consider or, you know, just to kind of let us know where we're at.
Yeah, I would maybe advise staff to look into that and make sure that that would be the way you would like to continue year to year. I know oftentimes, when you get the review proposal, it's almost too late to even look around to begin with, and that puts us behind, so if it's a matter of a policy change just to go through that every year, it's probably wise to do. So it's far enough in advance that you get what you don't like, you've got the ability to go or to negotiate. Are there any other questions, the staff?
So did I understand the stop loss increase was because of high claims made by other entities in our pool?
And that is my understanding, but that might be something I would defer to the Blue Cross reps.
Do you know how many times since we've been with Blue Cross, they've had to step in? How many claimants have caused them to have to step in and pay under the stop loss coverage for us?
You mean how many we have experienced, like how many people over the individual stop loss?
Right, how many claimants have triggered that stop loss coverage for us? If you have it.
Yeah, I do have, and I do have history. I don't have it with me, but we have looked at how many individuals over the past several years have exceeded our stop loss, the individual stop loss. Just a second here. Let's see here. Yeah, I think I've got s- well, I might defer to her, but let's see, it looks like the February to September thirtieth, two thousand twelve, we had two individuals. Oh, actually, that's not right. I might defer to Janet. I do have some history laid out, but it might not be exactly as you have asked, so.
Thanks. Thank you very much. I'm Janet. I'm from Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas.
Janet.
I think the question you're asking is how many people have hit the individual stop loss for the city of Salina in the past several years. For the two thousand eleven plan year, we had one member within the city of Salina health insurance pool hit the stop loss. The prior year, which would have been the two thousand ten plan year, was two. The two thousand nine plan year was two. And the two thousand eight plan year was four, although that was a year we had a lower stop loss level. We had a seventy-five thousand dollar individual stop loss the two thousand eight plan year, and then we upped it to a hundred and fifty thousand in two thousand nine.
But we didn't see this big jump in the stop loss coverage from oh eight, oh nine, ten, eleven, just it's just been this big jump in the last year?
Well, there have been other years when there's been increases. I might back up a little bit and talk about the idea and the thought process behind the statewide pool rating on the stop loss increase, if that's okay. Blue Cross and Blue Shield feels like it's a good, better protection for the group, if you will, to statewide rate the stop loss premiums. No doubt, there are going to be years when you might earn a little bigger decrease because of the statewide rating than your group should experience on its own, but it also can work the other way. If you have a large claim year and you have several people hit that hundred and fifty thousand dollar, but the rest of the state did better than you, then you don't get the increase maybe that you would deserve on your own. So we really feel like it's kind of a rate stabilizer. Good example is just on the twenty, the two thousand eleven renewal year, the city of Salina experienced a seventeen percent stop loss premium decrease, although you had two people hit the stop loss that year and the year prior. So if we were rating you just on your own, you wouldn't have seen that seventeen percent decrease.
Commissioners, we don't necessarily disagree with that. I think the biggest question is when the percentage increase that's proposed is eighteen percent, and that's based on eighty-five percent of our stop loss, because our experience is fifteen percent, and we were negative sixty thousand, which is just about a point six, point seven percent. So we were about even, slightly better than even on our own experience. So that tells me that for the state, the full state pool that's included in this, to cause us to go up eighteen percent, that must have been nineteen to twenty percent, rough math. And that was the question that was asked, is what is the increase across the state for stop loss? Because that seemed awfully high in the market. We felt it was awfully high. And, you know, one of the things, we recognize, Blue Cross Blue Shield has, a lot of their information's proprietary, individual claim information, even cities, because they're in a competitive situation as well, and we recognize that. Didn't really look at asking for the entire state pool stop loss as a proprietary piece of information, and that was important for us just because we felt that that number statewide was just exorbitant and just didn't understand how it fit into, in the end, to our rate increase.
Well, and that's, I think we're at a point now where we don't have time to make sure we're getting the best rates possible, but I agree with the mayor, maybe over the next nine months, we need to be looking into it, make sure there aren't better rates available. Make sure this is what's happening.
Yeah, and we don't look every year because it's very disruptive to the employees, and there is timing of information. And quite honestly, Natalie mentioned it too, Blue Cross Blue Shield does a good, a very good job, excellent job with claims handling, and they also are in a position to negotiate significant discounts with medical providers. And so in the end, there's a lot more cost to the plan than just the stop loss premium. And we recognize that, and we appreciate that. We just felt it was a simple question to justify the eighteen percent increase based on eighty-five percent of our premium.
And I agree. I'm glad you pointed that out. When we look at the renewal as a whole, it really was flat. There's two components to the self-funded plan. There's our predictions of what we think your claims will be, and then our fixed costs, which part of that, and the biggest part of it is our stop loss cost. So in bottom line, great renewal, but when we started picking it apart, we had a pretty sizable increase in our stop loss insurance initially. Probably more startling because at the time that I brought the renewal out and we went through the numbers, we hadn't had anyone hit that hundred and fifty thousand dollar level. It was projected that probably two would. At this point, one has. In fact, we're looking at one member with over a million dollars in bill charges. So there are factors figured in to project claims into the future as well, but, you know, I think the black and white of it was, ooh, pretty, pretty nice little stop loss increase when we don't have anyone who's hit the stop loss yet. So I think that's kind of how this is, you know, why we really kind of started digging into the rating formulas of our stop loss, et cetera. But did I answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions for?
I'm not smart enough to ask any questions. I didn't know you guys were speaking English.
Commissioners, we have our-
Ever suffered with it in the private industry?
I was just starting to get it there at the end here.
He's glad to see the same misery occurs in this arena that happened in the private sector.
That's right, yeah.
If you don't have any other questions for Janet, we have Mr. Charlesworth, who grew from Kansas City, and he's a wealth of information, and he could give you a little bit of information about what he sees in the market and anything else you'd like to add. It's very helpful to listen to him. He knows his stuff very well.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Charlesworth from Charlesworth Benefits out of Overland Park, Kansas. I've been blessed to work here quite a bit over the years, and I get to see a lot of self-funded group health benefit programs throughout the state. Recently, we've marketed for public entities in the state of Kansas alone, all cities, and we do get to see the stop loss programs. And part of my argument with Blue Cross was, you know, based on my marketing efforts, they do have competitive stop loss rates. But collectively, you know, it should run a barometer of what we have. About seven percent of your overall cost should be your stop loss premium, and your numbers came back a little high. And I think Blue Cross has already kind of explained how they do that. So we went back and says, you know, based on our experience, based on what we're seeing in the marketplace, based on alternatives we've seen, this is just not right. So we went back and negotiated, and they did come down half. Bottom line is what they did, came down half, which is good. Now, when you look at alternatives, you won't get in the weeds, we'll get in some weeds, and I won't do that a lot right now. But when you look at stop loss insurance programs, you talk about maybe getting bids every year. I think you ought to get bids every now and then. I truly believe that it's public money. I think we ought to make sure we're getting the best deal. Blue Cross has not administered their plan with another stop loss carrier. So if you use London Life or Gerber Life, you have to find a third-party administrator to do that. Or you can work with a PHS Coventry, now Edna's bought them, so Edna might be able to come in here, but they don't have quite the discounts for the providers yet in the Midwest. So are we giving up five or ten percent of our claim dollars to save five percent on stop loss, which is only seven percent? Claims are eighty percent. It's a big money difference. Also, how they reimburse is of interest. Blue Cross has what we call a pay-on-behave-of type policy. Once you hit that hundred and fifty thousand dollar stop loss, they take it from that way forward. If you said you've got a large claim going on right now, you're not having to pay that and then get reimbursed. They take it from, once you hit that, you're out of the funding mechanism during your contract period. With most stop loss carriers, you would pay that bill, submit it, and then get advanced funding or reimbursed. Sometimes it takes ten days, sometimes it takes a month. One of our cities, it took a year. Depends on what information flows. Now, any third-party administrator with a stop loss carrier can be very cost-effective, but it's a lot of moving pieces that can work together. Point is, I think, yeah, I think it would be probably time to maybe do an RFP for next year. That way, we can lay it all out in front of you, and y'all can see the differences and make your decisions. But collectively, from the information that we see, the cities we've marketed this year, we think it's a pretty competitive renewal. Rule of thumb, what we're seeing in the marketplace is not so, is about this right now in the Midwest, but if you look at the national surveys, two, twenty thirteen, six point one percent is about the annual expected trend for healthcare. So if you look at your entire healthcare cost, five point nine to six point one percent is what they're projecting you ought to increase. So that's just a barometer for which to look at. When I see a flat renewal, as far as funding goes, y'all took a ten percent decrease, actually. Blue Cross didn't change their numbers, but your funding's going to go up seven percent. You ought to be right on, right on track this year. So we think that was a good move for your employees for the current period and for the new period coming forward. So.
Thank you.
Any specific questions or how things work you want to know now? In a work session, this would be a lot of fun.
No, I've been through it many times.
Sounds like you have, sir. Not a very, because as you know, stop loss carriers will give you a quote, then thirty days before, sometimes they can change those dollars. And that's very frustrating.
Bob, do you have any idea, when you look at the overall cost of healthcare in Kansas specifically, what you're seeing as far as the trend of increase? Is it pretty close to the national of six point?
It's actually a little bit less. We're very fortunate here in the Midwest to be a pretty cost-effective folk.
Does stop loss as a whole and aggregate tend to follow fairly closely with the total cost, or does it vary quite significantly?
It can. One of the benefits you get with doing business with a larger carrier, especially in a given state, you know, they say healthcare, the larger you are, the cheaper it is, and that's not true. The larger you are, the more predictable you are. Doesn't necessarily make it cheaper. And so when you're, when you hold hands with the Blue Cross of Kansas, they've got a very large market here in the Kansas area. And from that, you're weighing your experience of six hundred employees with their entire book of business, and that is helpful. Like the backside, I think Janet said this earlier. When you have a great year, you don't have a lot of leverage because it's like, we had a great year. Why are we seeing an increase? And that's exactly what we saw this year. Well, two years ago, we saw a seventeen percent decrease, and we didn't quite candidly deserve it. If you look at our money we paid and what they paid out. So it's very hard to get specific regarding stop loss. But I think you can, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't have to stand on your own. That's why you buy it. Otherwise, you wouldn't buy it at all and just say, I'm not going to buy this stuff. I'll just take those, that three hundred thousand, stick it in my health reserve fund, and let's go for it. Why? Well, because now we have a possible, I don't know the number, but if it's a million-dollar claim, we didn't budget for that, Jason. So we did budget for the one hundred and fifty, and yes, it costs us three hundred thousand. It's going to go up thirty thousand next year. I don't like that, but in the scheme of thirty thousand over six point six million dollars is not a large number. I don't, I don't mean to say that it's your money, and I don't want you to spend it, but it's, in the scheme of it, it's not out of whack.
It's not our money.
Not really our money.
Well, but I mean, it's a lot of money. I know that, but it's sort of.
A very small part.
If I had to write a check, it's a lot of money. Any other questions? Thanks for having me today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions, the staff, or questions on this? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and any action.
Mayor, I move that we pass resolution thirteen dash six nine six four.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution number thirteen dash six nine six four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries five zero. Do we have any other business at this time? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.